I would like to call to order the special meeting and work session of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present or watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin tonight's meeting with the pledge to the flag. Douglas Brown, would you please do us the honors this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We will now move on to Section 2, Reports and Information, 2.01, Proposed FY26 Operating Budget Presentations. Dr. Mitchell.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. As you know, after having the opportunity to listen to teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, and the community, I identified five focus areas to advance our school division. Academics, accountability, safety, communication, climate, and culture. The superintendent's proposed budget prioritizes and will continue to focus on these five areas for the 2025-2026 school year. In academics, we will continue to ensure we have high academic expectations and provide strong supports. We are ensuring that our curriculum is aligned with the standards of learning and our strategic plan. We are working diligently to ensure that our students and teachers have the tools and resources they need for success. There will be a renewed focus on graduation certifications and completion rates. This initiative includes increasing our dual enrollment participation and increasing our graduates with advanced diplomas. We will also expand early childhood programs and increase our literacy opportunities. We will provide multi-tiered systems of support for literacy and math. And finally, we will enhance our magnet and specialty school programs. One of my foremost goals centering around holding is around holding each other accountable. This means understanding our commitment to students, families, and staff as well as community members and that we will uphold the expectation of ensuring a quality education for all students in an environment where everyone can thrive. Maintaining our safety and security remains a priority. Students, staff, and families must feel welcomed, safe, and secure in our schools and our facilities. We will maintain our school security officers, our weapon detection systems, and provide additional training for staff. For fiscal year 2026, we will continue to require clear backpacks for all students. Students will also be required to wear a student ID every day while at school and on the bus. As we continue to increase our trust and confidence in public education and Newport News Public Schools, we will continue to communicate our goals, track and share our progress. We continue to strive to ensure transparency, trust, and active listening to provide consistent and timely information to staff, strengthen internal and external two-way communication, and increase our parental engagement and community partners. We will also ensure that our stakeholders have a voice in the success of Newport News Public Schools. And the last area is culture and climate. Promoting an environment of social, emotional, and physical well-being still remains a top priority as the fiscal year 2026 budget will provide sufficient funding to promote a positive culture and climate to support teaching and learning. Enhancing student engagement is critical to student success. Engaged students, as you know, are more likely to remain motivated and in school. Our programs will continue to offer student leadership opportunities, mentoring programs, and volunteer opportunities for our students. We will continue to welcome feedback and set professional expectations, consistency in terms of behavior and discipline for students, and will encourage all of our students to continue to get involved in an activity, a club, or a sport. Prioritizing good mental health is vital for our student success as well. Our goals include building strong relationships with students, staff, and parents, embracing students and respecting diversity. We'll continue to foster a culture of acceptance and support of all of our students. We'll work to strengthen parental involvement and encourage our parents to become involved in their children's education. And it is our goal to support a healthy work-life balance for our staff. So that covers our five areas that we will continue to focus on and you'll see that in the budget, you'll see that we have made a real focus, a concentrated focus on that area. I do want to take this opportunity to thank our valued partners, the city of Newport News, all of our community partners, our faith-based organizations, as well as our advisory groups, which includes our student advisory group and then our students, staff, and families. At this time, Scarlett Minto, our Chief Financial Officer, will review the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year 2026. Ms. Minto?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am pleased to present to you the fiscal year 2026 Superintendent's Operating Budget. The budget process is a very big part of developing the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget. It includes meeting with department and senior management for budget input, presenting their challenges and priorities to the school board, communicating their funding gaps to the city manager for consideration. Tonight, we are presenting the Superintendent's Proposed Budget and next, we will be providing an opportunity for the public to provide comment and feedback and finally, we will be seeking school board approval. The Superintendent's five focus areas result in budget drivers and these include academic success, student and staff supports, leaderships and instruction for professional development, family and community engagement, recruitment and retention, school and buildings' safety, technology supports, operations and maintenance. The goal in developing the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget is to ensure we allocate the appropriate resources to support these activities, ensuring our students' academic success to graduate college career and citizen-ready. This is our state revenue for fiscal year 2026 based on the governor's proposed budget. The Superintendent's Proposed Budget I am presenting tonight is based on the governor's proposed budget. Comparing fiscal year 2025, we are anticipating $4 million increase in state revenue. The governor is recommending a 3% salary increase for SOQ positions effective 7/1/25. And while the governor did provide $9.2 million for a 3% salary increase, reductions in our basic aid due to reduced student enrollment ultimately reduce the total new funding the school division will receive. So we're just with the governor's proposed, we're only looking at $4 million increase. This is our state revenue trend. As you can see, even with the enrollment changes, the state revenue has slowly climbed up since the Great Recession. For fiscal year 2026, we are projecting a total of $275.2 million in state revenue based on the governor's proposed budget. This is our city revenue without debt service. For fiscal year 2026, we are requesting $2.4 million additional reoccurring funds from the city to support salaries and benefits. The amount of revenue that we expect to receive from the state and locality drives what we'll be able to accomplish in their budget. Taken into account, the state revenue funding formula includes the number of students the school division will serve and the number of positions needed for each school division. This is our current revenue projection for 2026 for all sources. $406.3 million or $6.4 million increase over fiscal year '25. $4 million increase in state funding, $2.4 million in city funding request. And we don't expect any change this current year. It's a little confusing with federal because they're on a calendar year and they're always behind. So right now, we're not expecting a change in federal funding. We're not expecting a change in other revenue, which includes fees and athletic events and rentals. As we have discussed, the majority of our state funding is calculated on a per-student basis, as you can see here. Our student enrollment does continue to trend down. We are projected to lose an additional 129 students by the time fiscal year 2026 begins. Even though our general enrollment is down, our most vulnerable populations' enrollments are trending up. Pre-case student enrollment is expected to grow by 138 students in fiscal year 2026. Moving on to our special education student population, we are anticipating an additional 87 students more for fiscal year 2026. And our English language learner enrollment is projected to increase 336 students in fiscal year 2026. Our military-connected students are associated with the Impact Aid program funding, which partially compensates the locality for the education of children who live and work on federally-owned properties such as military bases or low-rent housing. Currently, our projections are showing a loss of 246 students for this calendar year funding, which overlaps fiscal years. We understand some townhomes and apartments are now partially funded through low-income housing credits and this is affecting our revenue from the Impact Aid. Not sure how we fix that yet. $406.3 million is the total of the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for fiscal year 2026. We will review how these dollars are allocated in our upcoming slides. At a very high level, this visual shows how the funding is allocated to each of the Superintendent's five focus areas. With the majority of our funding, 66.5% being allocated to academics, 23.3% allocated to accountability, 8.8% allocated to climate and culture, 0.3% allocated to communications, and 2.1% allocated to safety, for a total of $406.3 million. And I'm going to go into a little more detail on the next slides. Beginning with academics, $270.2 million of the Superintendent's Proposed Budget is allocated to academics. Funding for these initiatives includes all associated staffing to support these programs. Of course, these are examples that are included under academics and it's not all-inclusive. Increase graduation rates with advanced diploma, increase dual enrollment participation, expand early childhood programs, focus on advanced learning associated with academies, magnet programs, STEM or STEAM, multi-tiered system of support for literacy and math, and one-to-one program student and family supports. Safety for students and staff remains a top priority. The Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget allocates $8.5 million to maintain their safety initiatives such as appropriately staffing their security team, maintaining K-9 services and security systems we have in place such as our weapons detection, security cameras, and access control. The focus area of communication, ensuring we can communicate consistently and timely information to all staff and family and community supports. The Superintendent's Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Budget includes $1.3 million to enhance our communication system, provide internal and external operating and capital budget dashboards to improve transparency to all stakeholders, and appropriate funding to ensure successful implementation of our family engagement program and community partnerships. Moving on to accountability, the Superintendent's Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Operating Budget will allocate $90.5 million to maintain accountability initiatives, ensuring our students remain at the forefront of actions, our actions. Staff are accountable and we cultivate a premier workforce. Ensure staff and students have network infrastructure they need to be successful with online learning and operations and maintenance of our schools and facilities. Funding is allocated to one-to-one computers, recruitment and retention. We will continue our career switcher program, associate degree programs, continue our employee tuition assistant program, encourage and support the National Board cohort. Funding is allocated to support professional development and coaching of our staff and administrators and maintenance of our computer network infrastructure. Student Wi-Fi connectivity and online content monitoring will all fall under accountability. Climate and culture, the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget focus in climate and culture, ensuring social, emotional, and mental health supports remain in place. We have allocated $35.9 million. This funding ensures we can continue to promote an environment of social, emotional, and physical well-being, ensuring funding to support activities, clubs, and sports, encouraging student participation, and maintaining our youth development program initiatives. Employee compensation remains a top priority as 87% of the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for fiscal year 2026 is for salaries and benefits. I think you've heard that before. As we planned for fiscal year 2026, we reviewed how we compare to our peer school divisions for both the bachelor's and the master's degree teachers. The top of this slide, these are comparisons of teacher salaries for those with bachelor's degrees and at the bottom, it's the teachers with master's degrees. For bachelor's, we remain, and for master's, we remain very competitive for years 10 through 30. But we, for years 0 through 5 years of experience, we need to continue some work on that to remain competitive. This is a peer reviewer of our bus drivers. As you can see, the bus driver pays remain very competitive. As we raise the hourly rate, so does our peers. We definitely need to continue this work. And what really doesn't show here is that we are also competing with the likes of like Amazon, FedEx. Anyone who's driving anything is competing with us. So we definitely have to continue to work on that. And then we have our support staff. As we have with other positions, as we raise our hourly rate, so do the peer school division for these other positions. Custodians, child nutrition, instructional assistants, security officers, and school nurses. Again, we have to work to maintain competitiveness with these other school divisions for these positions especially. So having done our homework, we know we have to continue to monitor and manage our staff salaries to ensure we attract and retain the best staff. For fiscal year 2026, the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget allocates funding for a 3% salary increase for all staff. We will continue to maintain our teacher scales. We will increase associate teacher and teacher starting pay in line with their 3% increases. We will work to provide sign-on bonuses for high-need licensed positions. Maintaining total staffing levels affords us the ability to contain costs and utilize new funding to ensure competitive salaries and benefits and that we have the tools to support our student success. Our enrollment trends and associated funding projections do not support increase in our staffing levels. However, the needs of our students are changing over time and we must find ways to ensure student success with appropriate staffing. So therefore, as we move forward, we do not plan to increase our overall full-time equivalents. However, we will instead repurpose our vacant positions or underutilized positions and we will align teacher allocation funding with our current student enrollment projections. And our goal here is to meet our staffing needs with a net zero increase to the operating budget. Moving on to benefits, it is important to share that the cost of the health fund continues to grow. This graphic shows the cost per member for employee health benefits. It does include the dependents. And as you can see here for calendar year 2025, we increased from $7,163 per member to $7,745 per member because we just started our 2025 year because we're on a calendar year for benefits. Since fiscal year 2015, our cost per member on average has increased $260 per year. But if you just take the last five years from 2020 to '25, you will see that it's actually increasing now at $442 per year per member. So it's, that's why you see this increase. Over the same time, okay, going back to the school board's premium. So the school board's premium has increased $14 million in five years. So that means you're putting in that money to cover claims because it's not coming in from the employees or any other kind of way. So just so you know that. However, for '23 and '24, we did get a 3% increase for the employees and we are again recommending that for 2026, which would be, if you look here at the bottom of the screen, an individual increase would be $5 to $7.64 per month. And for family increase, it would be $22 to $30.70 per month. So I want you to consider that. This is our fiscal year 2026. Our operating budget revenue projections was 67.7% from the Commonwealth of Virginia, which is $275.2 million. 30.9% from the city or $125.5 million is what we're asking for. .8% from federal funding sources and .6% from other sources such as the athletic events, driver's ed, and rent of our school buildings make up the other 5.6 million for a total of $406.3 million. This is the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for fiscal year '26 by function with instructional services being 70.6% or $286.9 million. Operations and maintenance at 11.5% or $46.9 million. Transportation, 6.8% or $27.5 million. Technology, 4.4% or $17.8 million. And the remaining functions, 6.7% or $27.2 million, is administration, attendance, and health services. Again, for a total of $406.3 million. This is an overview of the Superintendent's Proposed Staffing Plan for fiscal year 2026. Instructional staff to include teachers and instructional assistant positions total 2,154.5 full-time equivalents or 55.4% of the staff. 12% of our staffing is transportation and this includes 317 bus drivers. Another 12% of our staffing includes other professionals, which you'll see on the right there. Covers nurses, school counselors, psychologists, media specialists, and technology staffing and support positions. 5% of our staffing is administrators and another 11% is custodial, maintenance, and security for a total of 3,895.5 full-time positions. Okay. So the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for fiscal year 2026 includes $6.4 million in new revenue. But we had an increase in cost of $18.9 million in expenditures projected. So we have worked together to identify ways to reduce these expenditures and balance the budget. Beginning with the increases, to provide all staff a 3% increase and the associated increase in retirement and taxes will be $8.7 million. To maintain our staffing market competitiveness, we want to begin that process and that will be, just half of that would be about $700,000. Again, to maintain our staffing competitiveness and to attract the most qualified staff, we also included .8 million for sign-on bonus for high-need licensed positions. We also show here the increase of our health plan for $2.4 million. The increase in New Horizons cost was $0.2 million and that's associated with when we get raises, they get raises, they need more money. So that's how that happens. Increase in fuel and utilities, .2 million. Increase in general liability insurance, .5 million. Increase in operation and maintenance of our buildings, 5.2 million. And then we have our decreases on the right, which is a total of $12.5 million. A reduction of our 12.7 teaching positions in line with the projected decrease in student enrollment is $1.1 million in savings. Passing $400,000 on to, of the increase in health costs to the employees. We also show a decrease in city pension of .2 million. Also, we paid off, we are paying off the VRS debt from the early '90s. This year is our last year. We have to pay $1 million a year, so that's a savings of $1 million. We have reduced contract services by $2.9 million. In part, some of it went to the textbook fund and other items were actually just pulled out of the budget, which I'm going to show on the next slide. We saved in software, materials, and supplies and stuff like that, another $400,000. Lastly, we also have to take into account, and we have agreed to do this, but you know, in the past, to project turnover attrition and so I'm subtracting $5.2 million for that. And we also have $1.3 million in one-time costs in fiscal year '25 that should not occur in fiscal year '26. Over here on the left, you see, these are additional requests to the city of $3.1 million. $1 million is for cash capital needs, which we can use as we see fit. And there, we're discussing with them, $118,350 to support aviation academy students to help pay their tuition for their pilot license. I believe it's $263 for a class and it's very, it's very expensive and cost prohibitive for the students. So we got a good feeling about that. The city also continues to maintain that they're going to give us two more million dollars for technology replacements again. So in addition to the $2.4 million we're asking for reoccurring, we're asking for this $3.1 million in one-time funding. There are some things we weren't able to so far find the funding for. The other part of the staff market adjustments would be like another million dollars and then you have this list of non-personnel carpentry, electrical, paving, marquee signs, roofing, PA clock replacements, HVAC. For a total of $3.6 million, we're still waiting to see if we're going to get funding once the final budget comes in or some other way. So our next step include a public hearing on March 11th and we will ask the school board for approval on March 18th. And so this completes the presentation of the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget for fiscal year 2026 and I would be happy to take any questions.
All right, board members, questions at this time?
I just had a, and thank you for all the work you've done into this. Just a couple of clarification questions, thinking those that might be listening might not know some of the terms and that type of thing. So I thought I'd ask. So when we kind of did the first slide with all the collective commitments, is dual enrollment participation, is that the early college?
It is. It is the early college. And we've been in a situation where our high school teachers were not dual-endorsed and they have to be dual-endorsed in order for the students to get the college credit. So we now have an initiative to build that back up.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I'm trying to, I don't know if there were any others that were right on this page, but that was one that I thought might be helpful to.
Because our goal really is for them to be able to walk out with a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time.
So would the vision in that case be they don't just go, say, senior spring? They can take more classes in addition, which would be fabulous.
Yes, that's the goal.
Do I have a question? And this is specific to, I guess, and Dr. Mitchell, this might be something you can help me to understand. So slide 20, in terms of aligning the budget to our priorities, advanced learning, does that include IB program?
It does.
Okay.
It does. It includes the IB program, the dual credit. It also includes advancing or retooling, if you will, some of our magnet programs and specialty programs.
Okay, great.
Taking it to another level.
Okay.
And what I love about the plan is that it's tying into the accountability plan in terms of the readiness portion of our high school students. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Oh, no.
I thought you were waiting to sit down.
I usually am, but.
All right, well, I have just a question that I've gotten recently. Some, some folks didn't realize that we pay for AP testing and we have done so year over year. Is that possibly anything that's going to fall by the wayside or be reduced?
No. What you saw up here as far as cuts is all that we've taken out.
Okay. I'm excited. I had the dual endorsement on there because that's been a big question for me, you know, going to the, to the graduations and I'm excited that our students will be able to do that.
And I will thank Dr. Rogers because he's worked hard with his team. He's worked with the Peninsula Community College to do some things differently so that we can increase our students' opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. The technology future, now I see that we have a projection of a little over $2 million that the city.
of a little over two million that the city would help us with technology.
You are are you saying is it gonna cost us more than two million?
Oh, I know it will.
Yes, so.
I'm just wondering for F, you know, as in the future, what are the, does that look like a static number that we would be hoping that they could help us with, kind of like we do with the budget, uh the buses? Or is it an organic number?
Um it was a number that was projected when things were more stable, that we thought a reoccurring cost. But there's no cost in the budget that's gonna stay the same indefinitely. The city will have to come back to the table with us and understand that we can't all of a sudden not refresh part of the computers. We have to stay on a schedule, so we will have to definitely talk to them. Well, we know the, right now, the increase in cost is minimal. But if all these tarant- tariffs go into place, I'm not really sure right now what that's gonna look like.
Great, thank you. And then you answered my question about V R S and when that debt service was over, so that's this.
Mm-hmm, that's our last year for that.
Okay, and then the last question is just about bus drivers. Can we go back to the bus slide for bus drivers?
I think it's way back here. Oops, there we go.
Okay.
So just look at all those years, up, down, up, down, up, down. It just shows that everyone really needs these bus drivers to get these students transported.
So I, this is maybe a question for later. Um and I know that the board has asked this several times. Have there been, has there been an in-depth look at our bus routes to make sure that we are using our bus drivers in the way that is gonna best meet our needs with our resource?
Uh I can just say that we have, in my opinion, we have the most sophisticated transportation planning system out there. And the people using it know what they're doing, so I feel Rusty's.
There's Rusty right there.
Rusty, would you say? Yeah, I mean, we are impressive. And we have more.
Yes, as are they, and I'm just trying to figure out what we can do to help in that that area. Well, thank you so much. Uh this is.
Chair, I I just wanted to tag on to that.
Yes.
And again, this might be a later. I mean, have we looked at, I know some of it's also set by budget, and we probably have more routes and more need for overtime than a lot of cities strictly because of our unusual shape and size. Um I mean, have we looked at the supply that, you know, the bus drivers that, number of bus drivers that are out there and are consist, you know, are shortages, if are they consistently predictable? And have we looked critically to see, okay, what do we do about this? You know, how do we have an arrangement that works with what we feel like the marketplace of drivers is gonna be able to give us? Even with higher or lower, even with higher rates?
Or I I would say, yes, we have. Um I think Rusty and his team, and I I know Rusty looked like he was getting up, but um I think Rusty and his team have truly researched, looked at all possible options. I will also say that while our student enrollment is going down, much like across the country, keep in mind that our more vulnerable populations are going up. And so if a student has an I E P, there may be fewer students on that bus, um which still requires a bus driver, so there may be fewer students going to a particular school. Um and you and we don't have students necessarily with certain disabilities on the same bus as students that are, you know, considered non-disable.
Um and I wanted to just, I forgot to ask, um the high need sign, the high need areas, the sign-on bonus, is that something a one-time thing, or is that something that there's opportunities content uh successive years? So we don't get someone who's got a great subject area, and then we lose them the next year to another.
This is a a sign-on bonus, so yes, it's a one-time thing. And we're actually using some of the vacancy dollars from that position not being filled to cover that.
Cover that.
And are we seeing when we bring somebody on with that, are we losing them the next year? Are they sticking around? I mean, does the bonus versus sal- you know, does it impact?
I I will speak for Dr. Ferrish in the back, and if I'm wrong, feel free to tell me. They tend to stick around in part because they appreciate the bonus, and the other part is as Scarlett showed, the salary comparison. While we're not at the top everywhere, we do really well in certain places, and we also, in most cases, with the exception of the beginning, are higher on this side of the water than anyone else in terms of the salary. So I think that's part of why they stay around as well.
Thank you.
Would that be correct, Dr. Ferrish?
Yes.
And Joey? Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from the board at this time? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate your presentation. Presentation, Dr. Fisher. So we will now move on to section two. I'm I'm sorry. Um we'll have comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell?
I have very minimal comments. I do want to um let parents know they should have already received an email, text message, et cetera. We will be canceling after-school sports and activities tomorrow due to the potential for extremely high winds. We don't wanna put students on buses um when winds are, could be approximately sixty miles per hour, so. Um just wanted to let parents know, yes, we will have school tomorrow, but we will not have after-school activities and sports.
Thank you for that announcement, and um we'll move on to matters by the school board. So I will start with Mr. Hunter.
I know I have no comments, uh this chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Ammon?
Um I'll also say no comment, but thank you guys for all your effort.
Mr. Brown?
All right, well, uh thank you as well for a a good budget presentation, and I'll just echo some of the comments or the questions as well. I think that there's potential future work for this board to do when it relates to our bus zones and how we're setting the zones. So I certainly think that our staff has done everything they can do to optimize the routes within the policy framework that we have prescribed. And it may be time for us to look at our policy framework to see where we can uh save resources, time, and money, uh particularly in our in our zones uh for the buses.
Ms. Alger?
Um I just wanna say thank you uh for the presentation today, um and no comment. Just thank you.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, no comments, but I'll also thank you for that being a newbie. Trying to take it all in. Thank you, very, very um insightful and explanatory, so thank you for that.
Well, we look forward to our next time together when we get to hear from the public, and I will adjourn this meeting.